And welcome to the June 14th, 2023 City Council Work Session. Thank you for joining us in this hybrid meeting format. For work sessions like this one where there is no opportunity for public comment, those wishing to access the meeting can do so by watching the live stream available on our website, the broadcast on Comcast Channel 21, or by calling into one of the phone numbers listed for this meeting on the Public Webcast and Meeting Materials webpage. And thank you again for joining us. And with that call this meeting to order, and our first item of business is civilian oversight protocols. And we have the auditor here with us, so I'll just turn it right over to you, Leah.
Thank you, Mayor. Thank you, Council. I appreciate you inviting me back to talk more about potential changes to the system. This is a follow-up from our February 22nd session. So you may, some of this may seem familiar. Hopefully, we'll seem familiar. Quick overview. Last May, we did a work session on the history of the current oversight system and the structure of the current oversight system. At the close of that, there was a request for auditor recommendations on what may be improved in the system. The three things that I always, always stress are our independence, our access and our funding, I think are the fundamentals to our success. I think this model is sound. I think there are a few things that we could work on improving. So the three sort of main areas that we talked about in February were potentially updating the protocols, improvements to the deadly force investigations generally, and then discussing potential expansions of the auditor role if that's what the council would want. So today, we are focusing only on the first. It's sort of, I'm not going to say the simplest because there's a lot involved in it, but it seems to be the, I don't know, it seemed to be the first one naturally. So when I talk about protocol updates, and I laid this out in the AIS and in the outline, the main thing that I would, well, I should say, the protocols were updated or were negotiated in 2007. This is actually before, well, this was when the original code was implemented, creating the oversight system. There was an additional code amendment in 2009 after the payork work that improved, strengthened our access to records, which is hugely important. So there have been code changes. There have been EPD policy changes. Our practice has evolved, but the protocols have not been updated since 2007. So actually, I went through and I started highlighting what looked strange. And I mean, I have pages like this where it's just, everything is just a little different than it was, you know, 16 years ago. So my main objective in opening up the protocols would be just to update them so they're accurate. I think our system is confusing as it is and an assistant that's providing transparency and accountability. I would love to have that process be as transparent and accountable as possible. So that's the main, would be my main goal. We'll talk about all of these. The issue of public, when public comment can occur and what it can occur on at CRB, timelines, what happens when there's a disagreement and an adjudication, apologize. Potentially streamlining access to records that we already, we have protected access, but streamlining that process. And then two areas where I've identified that I think we can improve or move forward, I guess, without renegotiating the protocols, our mediation and this good cause timeliness issue. So we'll come back to all of that. I just wanted to give you a roadmap of where we're going today. So number one, as I said, update the language. It's a little out of date. It just hasn't changed in a long time. I would love to bring that language up to date so it's accurate. The way that this would work would be that the auditor, someone from the city executive branch, whoever you would want, and the EPA would negotiate updates to the language and the protocols. You'll see that phrasing a lot because that's sort of the point of what I'm talking about today. Um, I want to talk a little more about public comment at CRB. Right now, the protocol is limit public comment on the case that's being reviewed. And they say that you, basically, you can't talk about the case at the case. So it's, if the case is being reviewed, we can't accept public comment about that incident. This has resulted in a lot of frustration from mostly community members who hear, you know, we notify them that their case is being reviewed. They show up because they want to talk about it. And we say, I'm so sorry, you can't talk about it tonight. You can come back next month. And that's difficult, especially when we're dealing with some highly emotional issues. And I think our system is not there to be a tribunal. It's not, it's not, I agree that public comment on the case should not weigh into the CRB's review of the investigation. But I think as far as trust in the system, it would help if we could allow that. It may be at a different point in the meeting, basically, is my suggestion, that we could do that public comment after the case has been reviewed, but it's still happening at the meeting. But again, that's something that would be negotiated. It's just, that's where I would go with it. And I don't know if the city and EPA would go there too. Accuracy of the timelines. This is one of those just sort of, it's just old. It's a little bit out of date, right? So 16 years ago, we didn't have body worn camera. We barely had in-car video. And now we review each for basically every investigation that comes in the door. I mean, I think, so for our community impact case, which is different, but there were 670 hours of video available to review. So I think our timelines just don't really reflect how our process works now. And it causes stress. I think when we are asking for extensions or people don't know what's going on, it causes stress, it causes uncertainty from both community members and the involved officers. So I would love to negotiate accurate timelines or at least more flexible ones, right? That maybe people understand a little bit more about what's going on. The next issue would be disagreements and adjudications. This is an issue that came up in Payork. It came up in the ad hoc committee. Like this is something that comes up so frequently. And it seems really clear that, I mean, there's, there is no process that's available to the community about what happens when the auditor and the chief disagree on an adjudication. And I think it's actually healthy that we have those disagreements. And I'm not saying that the disagreement is a problem. I'm just saying that it would be helpful to have that transparency around the process so the community can understand. If there's a disagreement, like currently, the chief will, is invited to CRB to come and talk to CRB about basically why they disagreed or why, you know, and I can, he and I can have a conversation and it's in public and it's respectful. I promise. They're all available online. But just having a process out there so folks know that we understand that that's a concern. This is what happens. It's not a problem that there's a disagreement because we can all talk about it. Streamlining access to videos. Again, I love, just so I can say, I love body worn video. I am not saying body worn video is a problem. I'm just saying we need to evolve our processes to allow for how much we use it and watch it and review it. So this is one of those where the code protects our access to information related to complaints. So when a complaint comes in, we ask EPD for reports and body worn and in-car video related to that incident. We review all of it so we can make an accurate preliminary or do an accurate preliminary investigation and then make it an accurate classification. EPD is so responsive. They are very, very helpful with that. It's IA staff who help us out with getting those videos and getting those reports. And I know that their workload has increased a lot just because of the frequency of video usage and the frequency of our complaints. So this is something where the system already tracks when we watch it, what we watch, what we're allowed to watch. So this is just sort of exploring, how could we make that process perhaps more streamlined to save efficiency on the part of staff time, decrease workload, so we can be focusing on other things rather than giving auditors access to videos. And then this is, now we're on to the things that I want to work on regardless of the protocols. And number one is the mediation program. We've been working a lot over the last year to try to reimplement this or revision this or figure out a way for mediation to be more commonly used. I think having conversations around complaints is a really good way to actually start building community trust. The allegation investigation process is not really, it's not set up for like healing or understanding, right? It's very confrontational. The mediation where the reporting party and the officer are in a room and have a conversation about what happened has had great success. It just hasn't been used very frequently because it takes a lot of time. So I've looked at the protocols and looked at the EPA contract. And the EPA contract is actually the governing document for all of this. And it says that the auditor and EPA will agree on a list of mediators. So we're working on making that list right now. We're moving forward with trying to reestablish that program. I'm excited about it. I will keep you all posted on how that's going. I want to talk about that. It's a wondering, it's not a fact, so I'm not going to tell you yet. But yeah, so I'm looking forward to starting to read, to use that more often and just offer hopefully a efficient, available mediation option for folks. And then the good cause issue. We, so we have timeliness limits set out by ordinance that I think are very reasonable. Service complaints, minor misconduct must be received within 60 days. Major misconduct must be received within six months, except for good cause. Historically, we've interpreted good cause very, very strictly. And we also haven't really made that just that definition or that interpretation available anywhere. So I want to do some workarounds, not workarounds, but work around clarifying how we use good cause, what that actually means. Is it you're in a coma? Is it you're in jail? What, what actually do we want to use as good cause? And then make that definition available for folks. So that would be, I would love to consult with city attorney on that. Sorry. But move forward with just having that, again, providing that transparency to the community around what is good cause? How do we use it? What's available there? I think I did faster than in February, but I think that, that's it. Please hit me with questions.
Okay, thank you very much. This was a little dazzling when you went through it in the last meeting. And this is much clearer to me. So I, I mean, you contained the topic, first of all, for our benefit. And secondly, it's, I think the way you've explained it is really helpful. So do I have counselors with questions or comments? Matt, go ahead.
Okay, thanks, Mayor. Thanks, Leah. Appreciate the deeper dive into the recommendations. I have some questions around the mediation program. And questions about public comment. But I'll start with mediation since that was the last piece we just talked about.
Sure.
One of the challenges, you cite lack of timelines and efficiency. I wonder if you could elaborate on the efficiency piece that has resulted in the decrease of using mediation. Then you indicate that there's a commitment to increased use and improvement of the program. And I wonder if you could just, you know, give us a kind of a top three improvements that you see need to happen? And how, how often annually or monthly? How often are you seeing a need for mediation? Or is it, is it looking for? Or what's the idiom? Are you looking for a problem in search of?
A solution.
Thank you.
Yeah, yeah.
Is, I mean, could that be applied to this? Or is there really a gaping hole? And could you indicate really where? You know, how paramount is it that there be a more robust mediation program? And I think I can connect those dots, but I just want to hear.
Of course.
You, I think better articulate it than, than the bullet points in front of us, if you could.
Okay. Okay, so I want to make sure I have the questions. All right, so I'm hearing, what is the frequency of complaints that might meet mediation? What do I mean by lack of efficiency and lack of timeliness? And what were the three improvements?
Yeah, and in the improvement bucket, you also indicate that there's a commitment to increased use.
Yeah.
Why?
Right.
You know, what's happening that there's a need for increased use?
Okay.
And why is the program essentially being shelved or stalled? Like, really, like, if you could just shed some light on what the issues are in front of you. It might, it might help me wrap my head around this mediation program challenge.
Understood. Thank you. So basically, with, with the mediation program, what we did several years ago was we agreed on one provider of mediation services. And that was one provider of mediation services. Um, and that was Mark and I and a decade ago, you know, with, with EPA agreed, okay, let's use this vendor and we will, we will move forward with mediation services. And then basically what it is, is the ordinance says that the auditor can identify complaints that might be um, good for mediation, suitable for mediation. And then we, we go forward with these, with what's in the EPA contract, right? So basically, we agreed on one. Um, the EPA contract requires that we like talk about the list annually. That has, that just has never happened. Um, so basically, we had this one vendor, um, scheduling took a very, very long time and any, in the vast majority of those incidents. So we would have, the vendor is trying to schedule with the reporting party and the involved officer. It can be difficult to get those folks together, but I, I just took a really long time. And then we had mediations happening, you know, six months after the incident, which is just not as effective, right? Um, and the folks who did participate in it thought it was wonderful. Like I got, I've had great feedback from officers who, who took part in it, great feedback from the reporting parties. What mediation does, I should clarify, is in cases of an allegation of misconduct, um, so potentially a serious, a serious violation of policy, right? Um, mediation takes the place of investigation, of adjudication and of discipline. If the officer and the reporting party show up and participate, then the complaint is closed as mediated. So they don't go through, the, the idea is they don't go through this lengthy investigation, this stressful adjudication and discipline period. And hopefully it's taken care of a little bit quicker. Um, in appropriate cases, I want to stress that. So because it was taken so long, we just started to refer fewer and fewer for mediation. Um, and typically not ever referring like service complaint, lower level things for mediation, even though I think potentially, so, so with service complaints, sometimes the supervisor talking to the reporting party and talking to the involved officer will have sort of a similar result where there's a mutual understanding that comes out of the, the situation. But I think uh, having a trained mediator do that work would likely have a higher degree of success. And we're seeing a sort of decrease in satisfaction in our customer satisfaction surveys that we send out. We also don't get a whole lot of them back. So that's why I don't always report them to you because I don't know how statistically significant those are. So painting the picture. It's just taken a long time. We refer fewer for mediation. And the last year, we've tried a few different models where if I'm the reporting party, for instance, if I've initiated the complaint, um, I've had a mediation with the involved employee and with a ECD supervisor. I think varying levels of success, but I think my goal in this is just my knowledge that a conversation where learning can happen is almost is far more likely to result in changed behavior than this combative investigative process where basically I say, you did this and they say, no, I didn't do this. And then we talk about it and then there's this whole thing. I mean, it's, it's just not the investigative process, I don't think is, it's too defensive for mutual understanding to come out of it. So that was long-winded. Sorry. Um, the improvements that I see, I would love to see just an actual longer list of available mediators who we agree on. I think that will help speed up the process. Um, because we won't be dependent on one person or one group of people to actually do the scheduling. I would also love to see increased use of it. Um, so if I know that this is actually taken care of within a month or so, I will refer more complaints for mediation. That doesn't mean the officers will always agree that they want to do mediation or that reporting parties will either. Um, but I think if I have trust that the process can actually happen fairly quickly, that's going to help me use this more, more frequently. Um, but I don't know, those are the two things I would love to do. I would, I think that I mean, if I'm really going to get sort of big picture philosophical, what I saw in twenty twenty and what I've seen over the last three years really, but, but more over the course of my career is this there's the national narrative of policing that is eroding trust constantly. Um, and if we can have a place where people actually have conversations and you don't have an action figure in a police uniform, but you have a person sitting across the table from you and you can actually have a conversation and understand the other person's point of view, then that's going to actually build trust and we're going to get to a better place here. And I don't know if it'll go elsewhere, but that's what I would love to see.
Thank you. It, it helps me rec- recognize the value in your enthusiasm for mediation. Appreciate it. In your time in the office, both in, in your role as police auditor, your, the interim role prior to that, and your role as deputy to mark prior to that, how often has mediation been used on an annual basis?
I would need to look at specific numbers. I know Mark and I did sort of a push before twenty fifteen. Um, and things started to slow down and it kind of died off. Sorry.
I don't, what, is Alan signaling me?
No, I'm trying to knock over my microphone and fight with this microphone.
Oh, got it.
Kind of a keystone cops thing.
Sorry, my
No, it's okay. I thought there was an explosion happening. No, so, and then I think honestly, as my, in my time as interim auditor, it was one of those things where when I had eyes on, I was doing, you know, every complaint for ten months when I was the only person in the office. And I was, man, I really wish we could make a conversation happen about this. And I can't make it happen right now because we don't have a mediator and, and I was strapped. Um, and so just as we've sort of built back up to a, to a functioning uh, humming office, I've been like, this is, this is a priority. I think this is actually a really good way forward.
So ballpark though, it's less than five?
Ballpark, I would say, uh, uh, we would do five, probably five-ish back in the heyday.
Like?
Um, but I would say, yeah, but I would say like ones that I could refer for mediation now, much higher. Um, once we have a program humming, I would imagine it's probably more at least twenty to thirty.
Wow, okay.
And I'm, I'm sitting, that's not all allegations because we don't have that many allegations. That's if we could expand it so it's being used for incident review level things, inquiry level things, um, if that makes sense. I know that's getting into the nitty gritty of, of my job a little bit, but
Yeah.
Okay.
My notes, uh, in, I mean, you talked about the public comment piece, so I'm not going to go there. Um, I think it's pretty clear. If there's a case being re, it's under review, that, that, that makes sense. If, if folks are limited into what they
Yeah.
can say about it. But the, the mediation program, the good cause and timelines, uh, my notes indicated that's not an insignificant endeavor. Please explain. So you, you have, I appreciate the elaboration.
Okay, thank you.
Hey, thank you. Uh, Randy and then Alan.
Thank you, Mayor. Thank you, Leah, for the presentation and the, uh, the AIS. Uh, my questions are mostly around the mediation program as well, but I think most of my questions were answered in the exchange that happened. With no mediation program really being in, in effect right now, how are we handling those cases?
Well, basically, if it's an allegation level complaint, we're just doing the investigation for the most part. Um, as I said, we, we tried the thing with, um, where I was the reporting party and, and we tried a mediation, um, with an EPD supervisor as the mediator. I was glad to have the conversation, right? I, I wouldn't talk about what happened in there. I, I was glad to have that option. I was really grateful that the union and the department were open to trying that. Um, and I think that frankly, the workload for IA investigators is not such that they could act as mediators also. And I think for community complaints, we need to have independent uh, mediators for, for community to really have trust in that process. So I appreciated that and I think we should actually look at the program as it was intended and, and actually try to get it as a robust program and then see maybe where we should, if, if there's areas that we need to shift on it. Does that make sense?
It, it does. I, I think mediation is a great tool, but I would be concerned of expanding parameters where all of a sudden, anytime somebody disagreed, all of a sudden you were in mediation. I, I think that would take a good concept and a program that can help and be functional and turn it into a a nightmare of trying to process all of these. So I what I would like to see, uh, and I'm just one counselor, but I would like to see, you know, some kind of a criteria that a case has to meet before you go into the formal mediation process. And, you know, establish that with a cool head when we're not in the heat of a, an issue. Um, just so that we are just judiciously using the mediation process, I, I, I think would be important.
I appreciate that. I, and I, I like that. I think, um, so currently, just the way it's, it's set up and it just hasn't been used that often is if I think or are someone on, in our office thinks it's likely a good candidate for mediation, then we suggest to the officer and we suggest to the community member that they might be able to do this. Um, and then they have to agree. And if they don't both want to do it, then we move forward with the complaint as is. So that helps a little bit, but it's not criteria and I, and I do hear that. I, and I appreciate that.
Well, I, I think the other thing with the criteria, people know what to expect. That could be a handout that's given them for the criteria for mediation.
Right.
You know, if, if it satisfaction isn't reached.
Mm-hmm.
Uh, mutual satisfaction. But, uh, I, I, I would just be concerned having, oh, here's an option that's out there and then it could, it could create a set of expectations I don't know are realistic.
Right.
Given the resources available.
Understood. Yeah, yeah. I appreciate that.
Good. All right, that's all I had. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Okay, uh, Alan and then Mike.
Yeah, thanks. Um, Mike and I were the only two around at the time when this was being put into place back in the day. Uh, I participated in the pay arc. I don't know if my, Mark, Mike did. Um, so, uh, I have a long history with this. I think it's appropriate to update, uh, civilian overhead protocols from two thousand and seven. Um, but of course, the, the, the specifics are important. Um, I think this is a very sound model. Uh, it works. Um, it's the model that other communities come to our city to find out how to make it work. Uh, that happens all the time. And, uh, uh, and I don't think it needs wholesale changes, but it can be improved. Um, and, um, the protocols are an agreement between the police auditor, the city manager and the chief of police, the city of Jean and, and the, uh, Eugene Police Employees Association, so the union. So it's an agreement among those three and, uh, no one party can change it. Uh, and so it's a, it's a mutual agreement kind of document, uh, for any changes. And a lot of those issues are bargainable, so they become, uh, complicated, uh, because of that process and, and maybe take longer than we want to see. But that, that's an important part of this that they're bargainable. So I see this process as kind of an, an investigation of specific issues, discussion, then mutual agreement among the three parties. And then hopefully it's not adversarial. Um, but un- unfortunately, I don't have the same confidence I once had in the police orders judgment that I'd had a couple of months ago. But having said all that, I think there are several questions about the seven items and the details are really important. Um, the mediation ones, I, I think that's a, it's a good idea. It usually works and sometimes it's even faster. Um, the good cause one, I think is a very tricky issue. Um, and, and we need to be careful about that. And, and again, mutual agreement on what that also, also means. I think the updates that reflect code, practice and policy are good. Of course, depending on the specific language and those will be mutually agreed upon. So I think we'll have a good process for that hopefully. Um, the public comment is probably okay. Uh, I understand the, the community's, uh, consternation about that. It's real. Um, how we do that, I think we need to be thoughtful about it. Um, I think the timeline, uh, I think that one's kind of a comma as necessary because not every time we need to have a different type of timeline. Um, access to video i- is a little bit concerning. Um, when specifically would you need, when does that come up? What's the problem that we're trying to, and you kind of addressed it a little bit, but can you? I'll need a second round.
Sorry, it's the, the problem is, the problem is that we end up asking for, so we get three hundred and fifty-ish complaints a year. We review about a hundred and fifty uses of force. We review some of the shows of force, but not, not video on all of those, which is don't have capacity to do that. Um, we review pursuit videos. So that is, that is, and, and right now we have ten pursuits this year. So just for numbers, that's sort of ballpark of where we are. So every time we see those in, in the database or the complaint comes in, we ask for related videos and reports from EPD. Um, and I, the feedback I've received is, I mean, I, that is a substantial part of, of, of an employee's workload to go through and click and say that we have access to this one and this one, this one, this one. Uh, I agree. I've seen it be problematic in other, in other jurisdictions where folks, uh, in oversight or, or not in the department are just looking at video spot checking or, you know, it's, it's not not things that I would want either. Um, so I think this is one of those where I could see it as actually uh, helping with workload over at EPD. The problem, I mean, the problem is that we're asking for a lot of video. I don't want to stop asking for it because I think it's important. I think we do our jobs better when we have it. Um, and I know people have more work than just giving me video access. Um, so the idea is if we could agree to parameters where our access is tracked, it is strictly outlined what we can look at, what we can't look at. Um, people would see when we look at it, all of that. Um, then that's something that I think could streamline this process, make things a little more efficient. Um, and if EPA and the, the city don't agree to it, we'll just keep going with how we're doing it. Um, the way we're doing it complies with code and just takes a lot of workload.
Makes sense.
Good.
Yes. All right, Mike.
Thank you, Mayor. I, uh, I appreciate all the presentation and I, I want to say I, I agree with Alan's comments, undoubtedly. Um, I'm still trying to wrap my head around the value to the community rather than the individual, but to the community of an increase in mediation. I can, I can completely understand why an individual may feel better about that situation. But my understanding is that the program in the first place exists to build trust with the community as a whole because no particular interaction could be hidden and not properly investigated. Because the program exists to say, the community and, and the, and essentially the council through the auditor have a right to look at all the facts of a particular interaction and, and judge whether or not the police investigated themselves appropriately or not. And that as a whole builds community trust that nothing can be hidden. But I'm still trying to understand the value to the community of increased mediation. Can you help me with that?
I can try. I can also, I, I guess what I would like, what comes up in that for me is that I don't want to change the mediation program that was, that was outlined. I just want to use it more often. Um, right? So part of this is just me checking in with you all. Right, and, and why would that benefit? I see, I see what you're saying. Um, and I think it's a really good question. Um, I'm wondering how we
The individual, though. I mean, I absolutely
Right, right. I'm wondering if we could, sorry, Mike, I, I apologize. Uh, what comes, I'm wondering if we could come up with, you know, A, more specific criteria for when it would be used. Um, or B, reporting, like basically looking at it as sort of we're, we're trying to do this again. We're trying to reestablish this program. We could report out, this case was referred for mediation and these are sort of the facts of it. Um, so nothing is hidden. So there's transparency around what was sent to mediation, but then the conversation, the specific conversation that occurs in mediation remains, uh, protected.
Hypothetically, what creates the best scenario for mediation?
Hypothetically, it's where there's a misunderstanding.
Can you define misunderstanding a little better?
Sure, sure. So, um, use of force is not typically one. Um, but often, um, I would say constitutional rights. So a lot of folks, um, have a internal understanding of their constitutional rights. Um, what consists, what, what creates, what establishes probable cause and what doesn't that is different from, from law enforcement's typical training or understanding of, of what is probable cause, right? And so there's often an instance where, I mean, not often, but there theoretically, um, could be a misunderstanding of this person just ran up to me and handcuffed me and I have no idea why and that was completely out of line. I didn't do anything wrong. And the officer has a suspect description that fits this person in this area, the person was running or, you know, something. And there's an explanation and that actually just having a conversation. And honestly, when we've seen these happen at the scene, like if a supervisor shows up and sort of explains it, then it never comes to my office at all, right?
So you're, the value is that it helps the community member understand the law more appropriately?
It helps the community member understand law enforcement's point of view. And I think it also does help law enforcement understand community point of view because I think you have to, most of what I've seen is law enforcement tends to deal with a s- like certain percentage of the community. And they, I mean, I would say a law enforcement officer has a frequent interaction where they see someone and they run up to them and, and arrest them, right? Whereas I have never been arrested. So if that happened, it would be surprising and stand out to me and I would probably have a lot of questions, like a lot of questions given my job. But anyway, um, so this is one of those where I think a, a reminder and an understanding between the officer that, that the community member may be just going about their day and a reminder that that's how a lot of people are functioning and they're not actually thinking they're going to get apprehended by police and why. And then on the flip side, going to get apprehended by police and why. And then on the flip side, explaining to the community member why the officer would find them suspicious, right? So it's, that's, that's the kind of thing that I would generally want to look at for mediation.
Okay. Thank you very much.
Okay, thank you. And I guess I'll send it back to Alan for a second round.
Lindsay or Jennifer?
Was Lindsay got a hand up? No.
I don't think so.
Yep.
I guess the most problematic one for me is the disagreement in adjudication issue. You agree that we start with the premise that the chief has the final say on how he treats and disciplines the staff and that doesn't need to change?
Absolutely.
Okay. So I think clarity is fine if it's mutually acceptable. And I'm kind of wondering what specifically you're thinking about. Do we have an unofficial agreement or unofficial practice that we want to embed in the protocol? Is that where you're going with this?
I think there's sort of two ways I could see it going depending on how everyone else feels. One would be clarifying for everyone what we're currently doing, where if there's a disagreement, CRB can invite the chief to come and talk about it. And it's all on everyone's, everyone's mutually agreeing to it. Or even having a mutually agreed upon, like whoever the chief is, whoever the auditor is, for instance, will commit to agreeing to a process, right? So it's sort of, there's potentially the specific one that we're doing right now. Or I could also see having something out there that's a little more flexible, but still provides clarity for the community. Just, yeah, as you know, I mean, there's always been this, but what if there's this disagreement? And I think that disagreement is healthy. And also, I, yes, very, very absolutely do not think that it would be at all appropriate for anyone other than the chief, the city executive, to have adjudication authority, just to be clear.
Yeah, good. So sometimes we have these process agreements that, that we, as we work through and, you know, we haven't updated the protocol since 2007. So there's probably a lot of that that has occurred in those 16 years. So, so I guess I'm asking about, how do, how do we make that more efficient? How do we make that process? Like if, if everybody agrees and there's a practice that we're using and everybody agrees to it, we don't really seem to have a practice where that gets embedded in the, in the protocols, in part because of the bargaining issues and all the contractual parts about it, but also the mutual agreement. I guess, is there a way of making this so that gets a little bit more streamlined when we have agreement, that it gets into the, into the agreement, into the protocol, I mean?
I think there's a few potential things that could be explored and I would want to explore them in tandem with city executive and EPA. But what comes to mind would be what, what happens when there's a change to the EPA contract, right? An MOU or an addendum. So, so I can see that, I mean, we could also agree to that in the protocols. Hey, if we all agree on this new, on any new processes, we can add those in an MOU. But again, I don't want to, I don't want to overstep. That's a solution that comes to mind.
Right, or if the law changes.
Correct, yeah.
Then, you know, you have to follow the law. So it might as well be in the protocol.
Yeah.
Yeah, okay. Well, I worked with Randy on alternative motion language that kind of reflects this notion, this is a three-way agreement with mutual, mutual agreement. And, and I intend to support that motion.
Okay. I think, are there any other questions or comments from other councils?
They're just a kind of chicken and egg observation. You increase the amount of, you're talking about the timeline piece right now and you're indicating, at least I'm inferring that it's problematic, that it's a six-month timeframe for mediation. And yet the conversation is to increase the amount of opportunities to go to mediation, increase the amount of mediators, and decrease the timeline to a month, which may not be realistic if you're increasing the amount. And right now, there's a handful that takes six months.
No, I agree. I think those, those details are something that we would definitely need to work out and see how, how they work out in the implementation of the program. I would say, I would have some flexibility around, my, my hope and my goal would be that it would be more efficient and more speedy. And I would say maybe acceptable efficiency and speediness, right? So it's acceptable to the involved employees, whatever length of time it's taking. And it's acceptable to the community member, whatever length of time it's taking. I hypothetically would love a month, but I think just even using it more and getting more data to see how that works out would be really helpful.
Okay. I see Mike, second round.
Thank you, Mayor. Another thought that comes to mind, and this is, if Alan's language is more of a three-way agreement than a directive from council, I, I would be more comfortable with that as well because there's some considerations in this that I don't have answers for. I don't, I don't have the facts to be able to judge. We have a shortage of officer hours for, for police officers working on the street. That's a budget problem we're dealing with. But if we're increasing the amount of time that we want officers to do a different activity, i.e. spending more time in mediation under certain circumstances, that's going, it implies perhaps a decrease in number of officer hours on the street. And I would want the chief to be the judge of when that's appropriate and when it's not. So I, I would tend to support something that, that changes these protocols where everybody who has a part of the system has their say on whether it's acceptable to. So, thank you.
Okay, thank you. Randy?
Thank you, Mayor. And just to pick up on what Counselor Clark just said, that was my intent when I was saying, I think we need a specific criteria of how mediation is applied. And I, I really think that that will actually help you as well. But it will also address concern of overutilization of the process.
All right. With that, I'm not seeing any other hands raised. So I think Alan or actually Randy, you have a motion in hand.
Thank you. Thank you, Mayor. And before I make the motion, I want to thank Counselors Zelenka for reaching out and working on this. And the intent here is really not to change a whole lot. It was just to add a little more clarity and specificity going forward. Because, you know, over time, it becomes less clear what we actually agreed upon unless it's written down. So I've seen that happen a few times. With that said, move to direct the police auditor to work with the city manager, police chief, and Eugene Police Employee Association to develop mutually acceptable resolutions on the seven issues discussed in the AIS and amend the civilian oversight protocols as appropriate.
Second.
Okay, any discussion questions about that? Jennifer?
Yeah, sorry, I don't have my camera on. I'm sick and I apologize. My question is, I don't know who can answer this, but when we make these changes, I don't know, does the police chief normally have to agree or is it just the, the staff as a whole and the auditor and then the union?
Yeah.
It sounds like the motion is implying that he also has to agree, like him specifically. Is that true?
When I went back and this is Catherine, I looked at the way it was, the 2007 protocols were came about. And it was, the police chief was very much involved in those discussions. And so it's not, it's not as though one person holds kind of the veto card, but the, all those discussions are trying to reach a mutually acceptable process and all of those things. And it, the 2007 ones that are in front of you right now did involve the police chiefs, the police auditor, EPA.
Okay. And is that what the, sorry, and the motion implies that it, that no one has veto power? They, it's just a conversation and work it out, kind of, like you said? Is that accurate?
Well, and so it's not as though, if it, if it is reaching mutually agreeable, that means that everybody's, you know, they've reached a, reached a process that they can all get on board with. So I wouldn't want to say that nobody has independent veto power. It's just that it was always that, a kind of a triangulated conversation to, to reach something that everybody can live with.
Okay. So this feels the same to you more or less?
It does, yes.
Okay. I just wanted to make sure. Sorry. I'm a little sick, so I want to make sure I.
No, it's a good question. I went back and checked out what happened in 2007 because I anticipated this question being answered, asked.
All right. Thank you so much.
Okay, thank you. Mike?
Thank you, Mayor. I actually want to ask the question exactly opposite of Jennifer because I'm, I'm actually not in favor of voting for it unless everybody at the table has veto power. To force the fact that there has to be agreement before actions can move forward. That's question number one. Do I understand that right? Without agreement at the table, nothing moves forward?
Yeah, I would say yes. That is yes.
Okay. And then, and then lastly, I don't, I don't recall exactly whether all the protocols were a part of the charter vote that took place. I don't think that.
No, not, not at all. No.
No.
Would, would council have a final approval on this or no? On changes in protocol?
No, not unless the anticipated changes to the protocols required code amendments. So some of the changes that happened after the 2007 protocols were agreed to were code changes because that's what, the things that council did based on payer recommendations. But the protocols themselves, I didn't see any record of them ever coming back to council for approval because that's your, the way you actually changed the protocols, whereas changing your code. And the code takes priority over the protocols. And so ultimately, you can, that is where your, your process and authority lives.
Okay. Thank you very much.
Okay, Randy?
Thank you, Mayor. I'd like to remind us that there is a veto piece involved in this and has to do around the collective bargaining agreement with EPA. And that's protected under the Public Employees Collective Bargaining Act. So I just want to make sure we're really clear on our legal obligations there and that having EPA on board and being able to work through this process and not put anything in place that would suggest that we could breach their bargaining rights. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. So the motion is on the table. It's been seconded. All in favor, please raise your hands. One, two, three, four, five, six, seven. That passes unanimously. And thank you very much for this work. It's, I, you know, just wanted to close and say this work, some of this work was an outgrowth of the, what we heard from the ad hoc committee on police policies. And so I just appreciate that this is a very sort of surgical and thoughtful effort to be responsive to those concerns and find those places where there could be amendments and updating. And so I really appreciate your work on this and I appreciate the thoughtful comments from council. And thank you very much for that. Be arreger.